Amy's done?
Yeah.
Matt says I have to use the gavel because nobody's listening to me.
Yeah.
Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And first up is our program review, QCOM presentation with Maria Mens and Megan Gibbiss.
Well, good evening. I'm Megan Gibbiss, District QCOM Advisor. And I'm Maria Mens, District QCOM Advisor. We just take the board and should be grateful for having us here today to review our QCOM program for 22, 23 schools. So our leadership team is this of Megan and I in the district. The high school, Rachel Holmes, and then Monica Kumpel was originally going to be off last year with Shawn Porter. So for a one-year interim, she filled in for her. And here are her other responsibilities. She's pretty busy. And so we hired this fall, Marjorie Miller, the intermediate for 60th and 6th grader in elementary with half married. Our mission statement is QCOM at Delano Public Schools is a teacher-led program created to provide educators opportunity to learn and grow professionally while helping students reach their potential and achieve academic excellence. And I believe this is our 18th year. All right. Our goals for this year are a little different than in past years. They are all aligned to the FAST reading. So you'll see the elementary, high school, and district goals were all in the area of reading with the FAST test of the assessment. And then the intermediate school was had math as their goal. And you can see the percentages listed there. An increase from 75.24 to 75.74 in the elementary. Intermediate increased from 86% to 86.5. And in the high school, an increase from 83.5 to 84.22. And then the district goal, I'll go back and get to that later. And then the elementary and intermediate schools crashed our goals. You can see that they scored 80% in the elementary. Intermediate school scored 87.5. However, the high school in the district did not meet their goal. So we just fell short at 81.5 in the high school. And I don't know exactly how far we went in the district goal. So we fell short. Try to eliminate the goal of 84.03. And our average district score in the area of reading and FAST was 82.5. And just that if you're not typically aren't able to share goals with you at this program review because they're embargoed. But because they were fast testing throughout the full district, we could share that as well. So Mary and people put together a slide of the elementary highlights for the year for some PLC things. They have structured literacy and science and reading, which included phonics, fluency, comprehension, vocabulary interventions. They had intervention resources, academic and behavioral, and app resources for SST and MTSS. And groups, social, emotional learning, and language instruction education plan. For professional learning, the staff took a bunch of multiple professional development opportunities in the past couple of years. The letters training is a two-year program. It's very extensive. Those teachers that chose, when you take it from 21 to 27, Rachel, that was the 10 times 27. All 144 hours and all these teachers that chose to do it volunteered to do so. So it would have been undertaking six shifts, Boarding Gillian, sound wall training, FAST training, structured literacy, shared sessions. And just to put together some intermediate highlights, teams for their PLCs, results, and regulations to share how students are feeling. Develop common assessments, increase content area vocabulary, bundle the standards to create an inquiry unit and common assessment. Add some professional learning for the intermediate or interventions, mental health inquiry unit, and word swimming parks. And then the high school, our advisors put together this slide to highlight what our groups were looking at. Emphasis on vocabulary, like area disciplines, so dissecting some of those high-level vocabulary ones that we see pop up testing and as a group of multi-disciplines looking at that, how they can work to incorporate that to their teaching. In addition to that, writing with various disciplines with a common rubric. Math focused on interpreting graphs and data as well as factory. We had a couple of groups looking at the social emotional literacy, using that to promote academic learning. And then overall, a big focus of the 712 building was preparing for our shift in scheduling next year, going from the four block to the sixth period day. So we had a lot of emphasis on that during our tour lead starts. And then there was a group that was a mix of four through 12 ELA teachers that worked periodically throughout the year as a cohort, working on the inquiry-based units of study that we mentioned with the intermediate slide. And the district-wide highlights, back to the fall workshop, which is almost now a year coming on a year. But we had our staff out at camp in Hoppie. We did a lot of team building out there, provided lunch. We brought in Adam Welkum, who was a district-wide speaker. He was out of California, excellent probation speaker. And then our professional development throughout the year, we had Kelly Johnson in, providing first two of our weaker coaches in training, and she came back in the middle of the year and focused on the impact of presence and powerful questions, continuation of the ELA cohort, and then again, the elementary and intermediate letter training. And just a continuation of the PLC focus we, you know, that is highlighted in the tour late starts. Then a continuation of that happens in our collaborative groups during their weekly meetings, looking at the four PLC questions. What do students need to do or know? How will we know if they're learning it? What do we do if they aren't? And what if they are? Do they need those objectives? How do we extend that learning? For the late starts this year, each, we did some district-wide things, but for the most part, each building had a little bit different focus. Various presentations for elementary on topics for applied behavioral analysis, literacy, analysis to action, progress monitoring, and vertical team conversations. In the intermediate, they had Carrie Bolraff, who was, we met with some of the weaker coaches, and she was very well received. She was the main presenter focusing on higher level thinking, student-centered learning, scaffolding for student success and student grouping, and implementing differentiation, hoping to have her back next year. And in the high school, various presentations, some of which included mental health, the wellbeing of post-pandemic students. We had somebody come from, I don't know, the recent change issues. Depth of knowledge, success criteria, and then the continued backwards design implementation. So looking ahead, we always like to give a little preview because where are we having conversations about next year? And Maria and I are always looking at what we can do to improve our program. So looking at kind of some partnership, again, continuing up our leadership with QCOM, the district administration team, the district professional development committee. We are all kind of focused really on MTSS next year and implementation of that system. And so district-wide, we are going to be looking at tier-one components, non-negotiables with Nicole McHeverett. She is coming in, I believe for sure, in August and then maybe later on again new year. FAST data analysis, we'll get those scores and we'll see how we can improve those scores in our students. And then the SABERS assessment, which is the emotional assessment piece. I believe that's going to be administered in November. Pre-K through six, we'll be looking at analysis to action protocol, classroom interventions, and progress monitoring. And then 712, focus on content area literacy. I've been working with our MTSS coordinator, Jim Sholmi, along with Monica Kumpel, our curriculum and instruction director. We're looking at bringing in some presenters to focus on some key areas of content area literacy. This is vocabulary instruction and direct and explicit comprehension instruction. That would be with Dr. Jennifer Plucker, who's been our kind of advisor through the inquiry units. She's great. She's a literacy consultant and she does an excellent job in literacy by our staff. And then providing opportunities for extended discussion in text and meeting with Amy Young, and she's out of MDE. So she'll come in as well to kind of look at the discussion elements and to use that piece to aid in our literacy development. And then just to conclude, this picture is from my group, Camp in Hoppie. We had the pleasure of having actually a student as our counselor, which provided a really eye-opening experience for both teachers and students. I think she made a comment, one foot like, wow, now I know how you guys feel all the time. Some of us didn't make best students, but it was a great experience. And I just, I found this quote, children are the priority, change is the reality, collaboration is the strategy. And I think that really symbolizes our program. We're always focused around the student. Change is inevitable. Obviously, we've had a lot of change thrown at us in the last few years, but that, that's always going to be there. And so collaboration as a staff, as a building, as a teams, and as a district, that's, that's our strategy to make sure that our focus continues on the student and that we're working together to have that in the unit. So.
One thing I would like to add, and I know that Megan has had some pretty good conversations with that. The thing that we wrestle with, with the high school, is that when you deal with an older student and you talk about testing, so MCAs or FASTs, they're not considered high stakes. When you have a sophomore in high school, and these are kids that are in high rigor courses that are stating that, I gotta get back to my CIS chem class, this doesn't really mean much to me. That creates a real critical conversation on how are we measuring student growth? How are we measuring our programs? When we have students that, you know, and we're hitting historical rates of test out options? And this isn't anything different. Districts are throughout the entire state are going through this. But when you're putting these types of things together, and I know they won't mention it, but I will, because they care very deeply about it, but it bothers people when a certain site doesn't make it for a number of years in a row. And what's the reason for it? So we're having some pretty good conversations because right now, and this goes back to the time when I was principal. I remember we made the decision to put the MCA scores on the transcript that goes to colleges and university that says partially meet or does not meet, thinking that this was going to be some extensive motivation for a student. It doesn't make any difference. And that FAST testing, if it's not correlated with what a teacher is teaching and what they're being assessed with and what they're going to be graded on, it's a whole different situation. So we're having some good conversations about how do we think outside the box? I know that Barry and I have talked. I know that Megan and Maria have met with the high school administration to just strategize on how to make the assessment meaningful and making it truly a representation of the effort of the student with regards. Because teachers can tell the kids all the time, you do realize what this means. And maybe there needs to be more overt conversation, but this means we measure how well we do. You know, we are a high-performing school district. We need to know that. But if students don't see it as high stakes, now it skews the results of it because there's other variables that come into play. And I've seen it in action where kids would just not take it seriously because it doesn't mean anything to them. Well, if you're going to measure the quality of a QCOM program, a site goal, and you even got some dollars attached to it that go to our instructional, our educators, we gotta be able to, I know she's getting choked up all over about this topic. But I did, I thank the board. It's worthy that you know that we struggle with that, especially at the high school. And this is a conversation that other districts are having that are, whether they're in QCOM or not in QCOM, how do you measure what we're doing in the classroom is truly meeting in high standards? And are students meeting those standards? Yeah, they're assessed, but I mean, it's, it's a difficult conversation to have that. You can motivate a third grader, you know, a fourth grader, a fifth grader, sixteen, okay. Once you get into seven, eight, nine, 10, it's, it's a different conversation because there's nothing that's high stakes to them. It used to be the ACT and SATs, those are even, I mean, the drop of, I think Barry just told me, it's since my time, since I've been in the, in the principalship at the high school, we used to have 85%, even high 80% of those kids taking the ACT because they had aspirations to go to a four-year college. I begged the commissioner to let us use the ACT because that was high stakes for kids. That's now even dropping because colleges and universities are changing their admission standards. And that's not necessarily a, a big benchmark for a success in their institution. So I wanted to make sure that that gets mentioned and that our practitioners are working hard to figure that out. How do you motivate a high school ninth grader to take a test that really doesn't mean much to them? They get a number that says you don't meet and you do meet. Yeah, well, well, here's my GPA, and I'm already thinking of going this pathway. But yet that measures what we do in our classroom. And that's, that's something that we're still working through. So I, I think the public and the, and the board needed to know that that's something that our leaders at, at QCOM are struggling with and trying to work through it and partnering with our administrators to try to make this as, as important as we possibly can, because it is important. It is a measurement of how well we do. Our community expects high test scores, whether they're the MCAs or the FASTs or any other measurements that are out there on districts as people shop to where to send their kids. The public needs to know that at the high school level, there's an extra two, three lovers, levels of challenges with students and motivation to perform on the tests. So when I hear a kid who's in CIS chem, eh, these are the kids you want them to take the test and perform very high because that's a true representation of what we do in Delano, and yet they're not taking it seriously. So that's a struggle for us. And I think that we, you know, Megan and Maria and I, and at the leadership at the ALT level, we've talked about this. And it's, it's a frustration, but it's something that we just gotta figure out and work through and make sure it's meaningful. So when you see that, you know, if you go back, I don't, you know, whether the district and the high school made it last year or not, I don't recall, but there is, you just need to know there's another anomaly there at the elder student, student level in those grades.
Matt, is there a way to allow children or students at those higher levels to pick a time slot so they're not missing?
Talking all about that now. I had a conversation with Barry with the schedule, new schedule in place. There's all of those types of things that can now be addressed.
More motivated.
Yeah, hopefully more motivated. And then, yeah, we continue, I know with the MCA, they, they did one in the morning and one in the afternoon. It's locked it so that those kids weren't missing the same classes, but.
Because we continue to have numbers that schools would dream for, lots of schools, right? We're in the 80%. We're still high, but it's, it's not reflective of what you're doing.
Right, yeah.
I agree with you, Matt, too, that, and at the nine through 12 especially, finding a way to authentically assess what students are learning and achieving is more difficult perhaps than at K through eight. So these, these, you know, FAST and even the MCAs, I think you could ask yourself, is it an authentic measure of what our high schoolers are learning? That's a hard thing to wrestle with, along with buy-in at that level, yes.
I mean, you would think, and I think there's a correlation between FAST and the MCAs, that they're measuring the standards that we are supposed to be teaching in our classrooms, you know? And Minnesota has a, has never met a standard it didn't like. There's more standards in this state than any other state in the country, in my opinion. But it's that point of saying, all right, how do we truly measure? And when we're talking about met part of measuring our program in QCOM, which is an integral part of how teachers do business in the district collaboratively in, in those professional learning communities, the end game doesn't seem to be a true representation of what's going. It's definitely not lack of effort by our educators, and I think we all know that. But it's important that the public and the board knows that. I'm almost to the point where I want to make those FAST tests graduation requirements ask you to put it in the policy. We're not there yet. We've got plenty of other things to discuss, but it's, you know, those types of things, we just gotta navigate through and figure out how do we, how do we truly measure that? So, you know, in the next upcoming years, especially now that the high school is making this transition into a new schedule, we're going to continue to have those conversations to make sure it's true. I mean, we all want to achieve our goals, but if the, if the latter isn't measured up appropriately, then, then you gotta have a different conversation of how do we measure ourselves? And so we're, nobody has talked about no, you know, no accountability. We're all held accountable. We just want to be able to make sure that we're measured appropriately. So there's my anecdotal editorial for you.
I would also say I'm glad to see you're including the SABERS. I think that will be good information and hopefully you can do some good work with that, too.
Any other questions? Thank you guys very much. Moving on, we have the consent agenda, which has the main minutes, the special meeting minutes, all the financial affairs of the district. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I got number seven. All right, resolution for the acceptance of gifts. All right. Where is target? $22 for Delano Elementary. Loretto Lions Club, $3,000 for National History Day winner's travel. Fox 9 top teacher, $1,000 for Ashley Johnson. Ohio Pile Prince, $4.20 for Delano High School. Swim Dive Booster Club, $605 for reimbursement for state swim dive meals. Football Booster Club, $10,524 for supply reimbursements. Delano Basketball Association, $3,126.84 for charter bus reimbursement. Baseball Booster Club, $2,215 for booster paid coach. Boys Hockey Booster Club, $2,438.56 for supply reimbursement. Girls Soccer Booster Club, $94.06 for supply reimbursements. Softball Booster Club, $1,591.56 for supply reimbursements. Girls Hockey Booster Club, $1,760.57 for supply reimbursements. Girls Tennis Booster Club, $542.45 for supply reimbursements. Girls Lacrosse Booster Club, $2,814.50 for booster paid coaches. And Drama Boosters, $858.05 for spring musical supply reimbursements. These gifts have generously been offered to Delano Public School District with the conditions listed above. Do we have a motion for the acceptance of gifts?
Oh, move.
We have a motion by Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? Moving to a roll call vote.
All right, Board member Shouse?
Aye.
Board member Baker?
Aye.
Board member Johnson?
Aye.
Board member Gerke?
Aye.
Board member Rosen?
Aye.
And board member Denver?
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Next up is personnel matters. And those are listed on the board. It is hiring and employment season for the district, so there is a lot there. There's some contract changes and things like that. Do we have a motion for personnel matters? So moved. Motion by Sue. Do we have a second? I will second it. Any further discussion? All those by, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstaining.
All right. Motion passes. Five oh one. All right, administrative reports. First up is Superintendent Shane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to share some updates for the June school board meeting. I'm, obviously, we always want to remind ourselves of our district vision, which is systemic growth toward academic excellence for every learner. And then I do want to do its recap. Last month, I kind of gave you what was being proposed. I didn't change the title of it, but this is now reality and signed into law. So on the financial things, the two big financial pluses for Delano is the 4% and 2% increase in FY '24 and '25. That's a total of 6% on the funding formula. We, Mary and I budgeted and forecasted when we were doing forecasting about, we, we made a slight change from 4% to 5% over the two years. So we're still underneath what the state has done that, so that's a good thing in putting that forward. And I shared with you what it meant with Delano. So the runs are still being happening. That's like by each district, the Department of Ed will publish on their website, what does it mean for Delano in actual dollars? Because a percent doesn't mean too much to me. I just want to know how much money we're talking about that can be infused into the budget. And then the other major state aid piece is the cross subsidy. It's kind of bittersweet because they're saying, this is the historic, you know, we were sitting at 16% or what, even less at that at state level. But it's money we should have had from the very beginning. We shouldn't have had to cross subsidize the, we shouldn't have had to pass a levy to help pay for the programming that are required of us in special ed programming. And so it's a bit bittersweet, but we will take this. This is, makes a big financial impact on our, on our budget, so we will, you know, definitely do that. But for years and years, it seems like now it's lost that people said, well, look at all the money, extra money you got. This isn't extra money. We should have had it in the first place. But now we're having to take general ed dollars. But at least it's a little bit less general ed dollars that will be used for mandated programming. All good stuff, too, by the way. Unemployment insurance aid, I shared this last month. There's a state dollar amount of $135 million statewide. Districts will be reimbursed until the money runs out. MDE is looking for districts to give estimates on the number of employees that would qualify so they can do this on a little bit more of a proactive basis. We were looking at one time of not getting the money back reimbursed to us for, could be a year, year and a half, actually. Now all of a sudden creates a cash flow issue, especially as we're sitting there right there at our 12 to 16% fund balance. We don't have savings like we had before when we, in the days of the Great Recession, when there was a tremendous amount of delayed payments and shifts. So they're working on it. I had a presentation from MDE, MSBA, MASAC, and I think it's the rural organization as well, representing rural districts in the state. And all, the MDE had probably an hour on policy and an hour on finance. And there's a lot that they're like, we're working on it. We're working on it. So they don't have all the answers going forward yet, so we'll take a look at that. We do have the Special Education Unemployment Insurance cost. That doesn't start, though, until FY '26. I'm pretty pessimistic that the $135 million is going to last two fiscal years. In fact, I think it might only be one fiscal year, if that. So we'll see how this all pans out. And again, these are things that we just don't know how it's going to hit us coming down the line here. I talked about the renewal of the current voter-approved operating referendums. And I know Mary shared with you during work session, some more specific areas in EL, serving EL populations, the library aid, some student service. the library aide, some student services aide, things like that. But there are much smaller portions that will help us, but it won't cover a full position as what they might be intended for. Changes coming to academics. And I'm not sure, I know that I've talked briefly with Barry about this at the, at the high school level. I haven't talked to the whole team with regards. But this is what I learned this morning. New course requirements and graduation standards. Students who begin grade nine in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and beyond must successfully complete a course for credit in personal finance, which has to be done in either grades ten, eleven, or twelve, and government and citizenship in grade eleven or twelve. And when I ran these through when they were still proposed, I had Barry going, check, done, we got that. Check, done, we got that. So there's still a few things that we'll be able to work on over the next course of the year, especially getting a new schedule under the belt. But he was pretty confident in saying that we're going to be okay. We're going to be able to meet these new requirements. It's just figuring out how to complete the course for credit. Then by the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, high schools must offer an ethnic studies course. By twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, an ethnic studies instruction to elementary and middle school students. Mind you, offer, not required. So that'll give us some time to work on that, to look at what that looks like. When I asked some clarification from Oji, who does the, the policy piece, he said MDE is still working on whether this can be embedded. Do we have some change in standards within the social studies standards or within the science standards, within all the standards to embed this? Or does it have to be a course offering? So a lot of times, what happens at the legislature is they come up with these ideas. They hear from certain constituents, which is all good stuff. It's the process that kind of makes law. But then they turn to the people that have to figure it out and go, okay, Department of Education, you figure it out and give guidance to the district. And you'll see this in the next few slides under the Minnesota REED Act. By the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, social studies curriculum must include education in the Holocaust and genocide. The civics test is deleted. If you remember a couple of, I think it was last year or the year before, they required a civics test. Well, now that they require government and civic citizenship as a requirement of a class, they took out the test. But there's some other pieces in there. And as a former social studies teacher, I couldn't think of teaching a world history and American history or some cultural studies, social studies course without teaching the Holocaust or the genocide. I would think that they'd be empirical parts of some of the standards that should be in social studies standards. But they're being very overt in making sure that these types of things are, are in there. Science standards must include earth and space science, life science, and the physical sciences. And they're compiled into three credits. One is for all the earth space science standards. Another credit's for all the life standards, that's your biology. And then one is for all chemistry or physics standards. Okay, so they're just reorganizing some things here and there. And again, I know that Mr. Voight is not, he's very much on top. I know that Monica is very much on top of this, getting information from the department through the curriculum process as well. High school math standards must include Algebra II, Integrated Math III. I have no idea what Integrated Math III is. It's, it must be the equivalent to what Algebra II could be, similar standards. But I, we don't have an Integrated Math I. We don't have an Integrated Math II. And I got this directly from the Department of Ed or through one of the associations. So it's against, you know, in my day, it was Algebra II, and then we always had some other equivalent to it. Consumer math at certain levels or whatever, Integrated Math. And so that's what they're talking about here. Eighth grade standards will include the completion of algebra. It also requires the adoption of arts standards and ads, media arts. And I think that's speaking more toward social media, I'm not sure, or what other types of arts, but it incorporates that in there as well. And then also, an interesting piece that I wasn't aware of is that eleventh and twelfth graders can earn up to two elective credits for working in an assisted living facility, services and supports provider, hospital clinic, or childcare center. Which is, I think that's pretty cool. And it probably, hopefully will meet a need because these organizations are looking for folks to help with their services that they provide. The Minnesota REED Act, and what I did here is I organized this, and you got to remember, I sat through a hundred and forty slide presentation. This is totally the Cliff Notes version of the REED Act, but there was quite a bit of information in here. And it lays out, what I did is in the blue, it taught what's required of the Department of Education at the state level and when, and what's required of districts and when. So basically here, the first thing that's going to happen, starting Friday, Partner Carey, and that's a University of Minnesota Research Center, from July one of this year through August thirtieth of 2025 to support districts' efforts to providing training. Recommend multiple screeners by July one, 2023, and measure both reading proficiency and dyslexia, okay? The district is, their goal now, it used to be read by grade three, read at grade level by grade three. It's all students read at or above grade level. So we got to figure out how to measure that. The twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year administer an approved screener K through three during the first and last six weeks of the school year. We've been doing this. Like I said in the work session, and I know Rachel will reflect on this as well, we are way ahead of now what's happened at the state level. Because four, five years ago, teacher leaders from QCOM, administrators started talking about literacy and moving the dial with that. So we have been already doing these things to a large percentage of what now is in an actual legislation. So it's good to note that our practitioners have been very proactive in looking at this. But there's a lion's share of what I'm sharing with. We're doing, or we're really close of doing it. By August fifteenth of 2023, the department is supposed to identify at least three professional development programs that support the five pillars of literacy. And there they are listed. And then employ a literacy specialist to support school districts. And then identify evidence-based K-12 intervention material. Again, these are things we're already doing and working on. The district requirements is, beginning July one of 2024, we are to provide access to training for all pre-K, K, pre-K through three special education teachers, K through twelve intervention teachers, curriculum directors, support staff providing reading instruction, employees who select literacy materials. And if you mentioned, Megan and Maria talked about the letters training. This is all stuff that we have already are hitting a critical mass of training our folks in this area. You mentioned all the different PD examples that we have with working with people. So this has been just a validation for what we've been doing the last four to five years. And that we're moving in the right direction, and we're ahead of, again, what the state thinks that needs to be worked on. By January first, 2024, the state is to identify five literacy curricula and supporting materials that are evidence-based or focused on structured literacy. And they are also to develop literacy plan template by March first. The district requirements is, all other teachers and instructional staff must have completed training by July one, 2027. I would be surprised if the training that our teachers have been going through, through our system, would not count.
Letters will count. Letters is the standard.
And even bringing in Pluckett, we've been working with a few other folks that we think that will be in alignment to structured literacy, evidence-based strategies, things like that. Beginning June fifteenth of 2024, post and submit a literacy plan to MDE annually, report screening results. We're doing that. We have our literacy plan at certain levels. We'll just have to refine it to what the template is going to be asked of us by MDE. Other requirements down the road is develop MTSS model plans. We, we're going to be implementing a district-wide MTSS manual, talking about the tiers of service. And I've talked to you guys about this before. By December first of 2025, report to, report, they are to report to the legislature a summary of the literacy plans. And then they're to ensure professional development and MTSS trainings are geographically equitable. And again, we've been doing MTSS trainings at various different levels, depending on where things are at, at the elementary, intermediate, preschool, whatever the case may be. District requirements, by the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, all districts must provide evidence-based reading instruction. We're moving in that direction already, and this is not the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. MTSS is encouraged, must use progress monitoring. We're having these conversations now, and we've had to have these conversations. That's why we have an MTSS coordinator this year and next year. And moving forward, we'll continuing to do that. And then encourage to create personalized learning plans.
Matt, do you know if progress monitoring, is that K through twelve?
Again, it's, somebody had asked that question, and it's like, we'll get back to you.
TBD, okay.
Yep, it's a lot of TBD, a lot of, because you got to remember now, this just ended a month ago. The department's got to figure this out within a quick, some of it's a quick turnaround. I mean, they're supposed to be engaging with Carey. I'm sure they've already had conversations because they're just trying to figure out. I mean, some of these bills were literally thousands of pages long, so we're just trying to figure that all out. And we're having these conversations internally. How do we measure the effectiveness of a literacy plan? How do we measure the effectiveness of the tiers of support that we're doing? The department and Carey must provide reconsideration procedures. So if there's been some trainings that the district has had, there is a reconsideration process to ask for reconsideration if a certain training didn't meet the letter of the law. There's about thirty-five million dollars there for reimbursed approved curriculum purchased from July one, 2021 through June thirty, 2028. I'm not, I don't know if that's a lot of money or not, but I've never seen that kind of money directly related to curriculum purchases that we would have access to. So we'll see. And that's basically, that's basically the COVID time period into, to 2028. The requirements for districts by August thirty of 2025, they employ or contract with a literacy lead or designated literacy specialist in process of beginning a literacy lead. So there's some things that we've got to work on. I haven't had that conversation yet with my leadership team, but I think we've got some ideas that we're thinking about and how we could potentially meet that requirement. The more important thing to me isn't, and again, you know, you, oh, we got a literacy specialist. Well, what does it mean? What does it, what's the impact going to be seen with regards to our literacy plan, the tiers of support, and student achievement? If we need to create a position for such a position, I want to make sure that it's directly correlated to what's going on in the classroom, and are they best practices, and are they working? Megan and Maria talked about those four essential questions in our PLCs. We live that in our, our lead peer coaches. By design, we want to have those conversations all the time. And then use literacy incentive aid for the implementation of these things. And that concludes my report for this evening. I sat through about four hours of this stuff. You just got the high-level stuff. There's a lot of stuff that we're still figuring out that seemed to be a theme, but I thought it was important, especially that we are moving in the right direction, and we have been doing things that now the state says, these are all very important things. It validates the work of our leaders in the district, both at the QCOM level, the administrative level, and all the coordination levels, that we are doing the right things and we're ahead of the ball.
Any questions for Matt? All right, moving on to principals. Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening on behalf of the intermediate school. For the month of June, obviously, it's a pretty quiet month as we're wrapping up the school year. The next time I'll present to you, we'll be looking forward into the next year. But for this month, really, the update is just that we wrapped up our school year, like I mentioned last month, with a lot of busyness and fun events and things. And we waved a fond farewell to all of our students, and then I waved a fond farewell to all of our staff on Monday. So our office was busy the first part of June, just putting together schedules and getting all of our kids placed for next year. They got a lot of work done. Our office is closed officially as of June fifteenth. And then those ladies will be back in August to get us up and running again. We are working on some staffing. We were working on staffing. We are fully staffed at the intermediate school as of last week, so we're really excited about that. We hired three teachers for next year. We've hired an academic interventionist that's a position funded for one year via grant, so we're looking forward to having someone in that position. We hired a special education teacher, and then we've also just recently hired a fourth grade classroom teacher as we've added a section in that grade level. So we're really excited about all of the people we're bringing on board at the intermediate school. And then I'll just end with a brief update on our FAST scores as well, just to kind of round out our year. Megan and Maria shared this information as well. But we did meet our math goal for QCOM, which was really exciting. We saw some really great growth in math. That's been our focus area for the last two years, so that was encouraging. Our FAST scores are our universal screener, so that's the test that we give three times each year to really look very carefully at how our kids are responding to intervention. So eighty-seven percent of our students were low-risk or college pathway in math, and eighty-five percent were low-risk or college pathway in reading, which is just a credit to our amazing teachers and families who support our kids. We had a really wonderful year, so any comments or questions?
Thank you. All right, next up, Elementary Principal Ms. Schultz. Or no, Mr. Voight. Sorry, Mr. Voight. I skipped right over you.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the high school. As you know, I start my presentations with some congratulations. And some of our athletic teams had some exciting ends of the season. So our girls softball team made it to their state tournament with an exciting victory in the section championship, and they ended up taking fourth place in that state tournament. We also sent a number of individuals to the track and field state championship, and I won't be naming their names for fear of missing out on one or two of them, but they did perform very well. And the baseball team also had a very exciting finish to their postseason, narrowly missing the, the state tournament bid there. But the most important congratulations goes to the one hundred and ninety-six seniors who graduated this year at the beginning of the month. Thanks to those of you that were able to participate in that wonderful event. And I'm really proud to announce that that was a hundred percent of our senior class that graduated. So that was a significant testament to the work of our students, our staff, and the families to maintain their encouragement throughout the years we finished up, and we wish all of them, of course, the best of luck in their futures. Something that I'll add with respect to our seniors, just in case people are hearing about them, is a little bit of a conflict we've had with transcripts this summer. So to share a little bit of the backstory, historically, we have always posted an expected graduation date on our transcripts. And then over the years, because we get transcript requests from people that date back fifteen, twenty, thirty years, and there's an expected graduation date printed on there, even if they didn't actually graduate from Delano High School. So it was recommended to us through our Skyward associates that we remove the graduation date from the transcript. So we did that, thinking now we were good to go, and then uploaded the final transcripts to Naviance for our seniors. And then, of course, when those get sent out to colleges, and the colleges are like, well, you didn't have a graduation date on there, so. So perhaps some poor advice, but now we've had to since correct those things. And so if you do hear from students who are entering a four-year school or whatever, that, you know, their, their colleges is, are reaching out to them saying, hey, we finalized transcripts, just make sure to let our office know we are taking care of those. Mr. Tool, even if you email him, you'll get the out-of-office reply, but he is coming in frequently to, to process all of those transcripts. And we did update the transcript and then load it on to Naviance. And you would think that Naviance would just be able to send out a second burst, but apparently that's not possible. So it's, created a little bit of extra work. And admittedly, it's probably some stress for our seniors, but we are processing all of those. Just to provide a site-based leadership team update, so obviously, on your agenda this evening is the approval of our student handbooks. And that action will, of course, bring to close the work for, for our site-based leadership team during this school year. We do have a retreat scheduled for mid-August, and at that time, we'll be analyzing the results of our school climate surveys, our FAST results, and all sorts of things, and look at all of the other things, even with reference to Mr. Shane's comments and the QCOM program comments just about how do we sort of nurture an improved climate related to standardized testing, so. So we'll be having all those conversations and setting ourselves up for, for next school year when that time comes, around in mid-August. And then as our board chair referenced, it is staffing season, and I am currently in the market for a school social worker, a school nurse, and administrative assistant, all of which are extremely, as all of our positions are, but those three are extremely important positions that require some talented individuals. So anyone that is interested, now please get in contact with me or apply through our, our website. Or if you know potentially somebody who would be a nice fit for any of those positions, feel free to encourage them to apply as well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the high school.
Any questions for Mr. Voight? All right, thank you, Mr. Voight. Now Ms. Schultz.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the elementary school. I think the last time I was here, I was about ready to partake on the roof and sleep overnight, which was a success. We made it the entire night. I promise you, I did not sneak in at all. We were up at 4:00 AM, but we made it the whole night. So it was a good time, and it was really fun to greet the kids the next day in the morning. But as we wrapped up June, lots of fun, successful end to the year. It was exciting, of course, what Maria and Megan had shared about our reading goal and meeting that. And our math fast results were at 78.7%. So we'll continue to work on that. That actually is, leads into one of our goals for next year in regards to the interventions and MTSS. We don't have a lot of, like, strong intervention-based knowledge necessarily about math. So obviously, we've been doing a lot with the reading and learning intensively about that, which is so critical. But we can see that we need to help offset that with math. So, and our data shows that. So that's something that we'll continue to watch. Additionally, our site base and staff and students were developing our vision and mission statement for Dillon Elementary School. And that was determined and decided. So I'd like to share that with you, our vision at the elementary. And it supports the district vision and mission as well. Empowering and inspiring all students to excel as lifelong learners. And our mission, to achieve our mission, vision, we will work collaboratively to ensure that each student achieves his or her potential through educational experiences utilizing student-centered practices with a nurturing and motivating environment in partnership with family and community. So the next step, of course, with any vision and mission is to not just plaster it everywhere and not, you know, carry it out with your actions and what you do. So we'll be looking forward to taking those steps moving forward at the elementary school. And we are not done hiring at the elementary school. We have hired quite a few positions so far, partly because we were able to add teachers in sections, which I'm very, very grateful for. So we are still in need of two second-grade teachers now. But otherwise, we, we are making some progress. So that's good. So we'll continue to do that probably into July. Class sizes look really good because of the additional sections that we were able to add. So I'm excited for that in the fall. They were a little heavy in third grade when we started last fall. So it's nice to have those reduced as we start. And workshop week plans, MTSS, as Maria and Megan mentioned, MTSS is going to be the main focus. And we have some team building and supporting our new staff, since we'll have great fuel starting with us. Any comments or questions?
Any questions for Ms. Schultz?
And I would like to just add what Rachel mentioned, kind of, in my editorial comments about the high school and testing does not at all, I want to recognize the elementary and the intermediate school of achieving their goals and doing well. It's, so I didn't want to forget that piece too there.
Thanks.
Next up, business manager, Mary Reader.
Budget time of year. So based on the estimated ending fund balance for this year, we're looking at the unreserved fund balance being around 14%. And then looking at the original budget going into next year, it looks like our ending fund balance would be, the unassigned would be around 16%. And a big portion of that is coming because of our special across subsidy and the 4% state aid increase. And just as a side note, next year is going to be the first year we have not been deficit spending since the 17, 18 school year. Just thought I'd throw that out there. It's been a long time. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Reader? All right.
Thank you.
Moving on, next up, community education, Mr. Irlandson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for having me here. It's Ico Community and Activities. As we get to this point where we get all of our programs up and running, staff is feeling good, kids are active, it's, it's a natural time where they think they can take this little breath. But their deadline for the fall brochure is next week. So they are, they are busy churning out programs that will go into the next brochure that comes out in mid-August. So things are up and running, but the work doesn't really stop. So they can exhale, they can exhale a week or so from now. In activities, we wrapped up all of our seasons. And Associate Aiden McCall is busy wrapping up fall field scheduling. All of our game schedules are done, the practice schedule and logistically making all of that work. He's wrapping that up here in the next week or so. And then he'll move on to gym scheduling for winter activities. So, you know, the key thing about that position and then a lot of what we do in community as well is always planning, working ahead, and getting into that cycle where we're looking seasons ahead versus the line in front of us. And with that, this, this summer in July, on the 27th of July, we are going to be having a collective group where both all of our community ed and activities department people are going to come together. We're going to be doing some planning as far as what it looks like for the next three years and looking at what we can accomplish with some larger initiatives by working together. This is kind of the last step of, you know, we've spent some time figuring out what our guiding principles are, changing the way we look at how we go about our work in community ed. And now with this last transition with really looking at what we can do collectively with multiple departments. So we're going to be pulling all of our staff together on the 27th. We're going to be bringing in other staff members outside of that's going to come in. We're going to bring in advisory council members come in, people from the city to come in to collectively look at what we can accomplish in the next three years by working more closely together across our both departments. And, and then have this be our system on how we continually look for and make sure that we are maximizing what we can do in community and activities. Any questions?
Thank you. Next up is board reports. First up is Masico.
Yeah, I attended the May Masico meeting. The minutes are linked. It was a very brief meeting. So in interest of time, I'd say it's pretty self-explanatory. It was just typical end of year, looking at staffing and space needs for this following next year.
Any questions for Amy? All right, next up is Rite Tech Center.
Our meeting was not brief, but you can read about it. It mainly was a closed session to the director, Kozlowski, and how he does his future plans. We're really excited about how the staff board and the superintendents gave feedback towards him. And some of the big ones are, let's review the programs that we offer. Are they still relevant? What should we do in the future that would attract more kids to actually enroll in Rite Tech? It's kind of a fun endeavor, looking at programs. Otherwise, everyone thinks he's doing a great job, you know, with what he has to offer. And the rest you can read about.
All right. Since there was no old business, we'll move on to new business. And first up is the DIS handbook. We discussed it in work session last month. If, oh, we need a motion to approve the DIS handbook. That's where we're at. Do a motion to approve the DIS handbook.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the DES handbook. We also talked about that in work session last month. Do you have a motion to approve the DES handbook?
So moved.
Motion by Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And finally, the DHS handbook. Talked about that as well. Do we have a motion to approve the DHS handbook?
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Do we have a document to pop up for that? Nope. Okay. I believe we talked about that last month. Who did we?
We did.
We do it every year.
Very briefly, we did. It's an annual, it's the, the resolution, or the, the resolution is the same every year. It's just that the State High School League requires boards approve the resolution, and it's an annual piece, so.
It's how our kids play sports. All right, do we have a motion to approve the resolution for the Minnesota State High School League?
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan, second?
Second.
By Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Roll call vote.
Oh, roll call vote.
Excuse me, Board Member Schous.
Aye.
Board Member Baker.
Aye.
Board Member Johnson.
Aye.
Board Member Gerke.
Aye.
Board Member Roser.
Aye.
And Board Member Jeff.
Aye.
All right, next up is the resolution certifying the population estimate for the 2023 payable 2024 levy of independent school district 879.
Again, this is an annual renewal. It drives, I believe some of it drives the levy funding for community ed.
Do we have any motion to?
I'll entertain them, or I'll move.
All right, a motion by Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
What is this population estimate? Do we know? Is there a number or what?
12,700 something.
Thank you.
All right, move to a roll call vote.
Board Member Schous.
Aye.
Board Member Baker.
Aye.
Board Member Johnson.
Aye.
And Board Member Gerke.
Aye.
Board Member Roser.
Aye.
And Board Member Jeff.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, and then, finally, I think, maybe. The next up is to approve the original 2023, 2024 budget. We did talk about that.
For statute, it needs to be done this, at this meeting.
I'll move to approve.
A motion by Ryan. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor, wait, let me check, make sure it's not roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There's still more stuff. Okay, up next is to approve the fiscal year 2025 10-year-long-term facilities maintenance plan and the LTFM plan resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We've got a motion by Amy. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Board Member Schous.
Aye.
Board Member Baker.
Aye.
Board Member Johnson.
Aye.
Board Member Gerke.
Aye.
Board Member Roser.
Aye.
And Board Member Jeff.
Aye.
All right.